To order, recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McHugh?
Here.
Ma'am Martin?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Ms. Fattacante?
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the September 19, 2007 meeting. Motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, second by Ms. Fattacante. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the minutes are approved. Under permission to enter, there are several items. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, three contracts that I'm recommending for approval. The first, Susan Turcot-Gavril, $8,910 to provide music instruction and viola, violin, and cello to students at Lowell High School, funding provided by the Lowell Sun Community Fund. North Reading Linfield Taxi Incorporated, $247,460 to amend the first year of the contract for regular education transportation for students involved in after-school activities and school field trips, funding provided by various grants. And VHS Incorporated, which is the Virtual High School Incorporated, $6,500, which is our membership fee for the Virtual High School program, which includes the delivery of online professional development courses and net courses to Lowell High School students and teachers, funding provided by the Lowell High School Technology Fund.
Questions or comments on any of those items? Is there a motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, second by Ms. Martin? Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ma'am Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, please.
Seven yeas. The contracts are approved. Under memorials this evening, there is one item, a memorial to be offered by Ms. Martin in memory of Jason McCoy, the brother of Susan Otero, a Washington school teacher and nephew of Mary Beator, Secretary in the Office of Finance and Operations. If we could please rise in a moment of silence in darkened chambers in his memory. Under the motions this evening, there is one motion by Ms. Fattacante. The motion is that the Superintendent report at the next meeting the results of the Personnel Advisory Committee recommendations for position of principal and assistant principal for the past five years. Second by Mr. McHugh. Ms. Fattacante.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's been a lot of discussion about the hiring practices of the Lowell School Department for the past couple of months. And there have been some statements made by myself that I'm not sure we're hiring within the original policies that was established by the Personnel Selection Advisory Committee. The only way to determine that is to ask the Superintendent to provide us with information as to whether or not she has veered from those policies at any time during a hiring of a principal or a vice principal. And that way, I'll feel better about it. Other people will feel better about it. And we can put to rest the discussion that we're not following the policy. I looked at our policy manual that we are looking at today, and I did see that the Superintendent has outlined or highlighted in the new policies that she will endeavor, if candidates are equal value, she will endeavor to always promote from within. So I'm just looking for a report at our next meeting that goes back the past several years, looks at the results of the hiring, which would be the three names that have been put forward from the selection committee and the Superintendent's pick of those names. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Just quickly on that, too. If the make of the motion would also add, I think, which is important to it, how many people from within are actually applying for positions? I think that report we had maybe a month ago now regarding the percentage number of folks were pointing from within is nice information, but I think we need to drill down further and find additional information. I think how many people who are actually applying from within is a good start to see, one, are people applying? If they're not applying, then we need to drill down further to see why not. Is it something we need to do? I think we pointed out at agnostium at this point regarding that issue. But if you would may add that to your motion, I think that'd give us additional information to really pinpoint if there is a problem, where is that problem actually coming from? And then we can take action steps to correct it. Thank you.
So...
I'll amend my motion, Your Honor, to include that.
So to amended, to include, how many of the people in these groups?
In the selection, in the three names, are local candidates, yes.
But also, in addition, how many of the total pool applied from within?
Internal candidates, right. Internal candidates, right.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure we're clear on what you're requesting. Are you looking for a list of names?
Yes.
So you, we'd need to do some investigation to see if it's legal to reveal individuals' names who applied for jobs and were not given those jobs, and their willingness to have their name broadcast in a public meeting for having not been selected. I mean, I think that would be the baseline of professionalism.
It's not my intent to broadcast a name. It's my intent that if a policy is not being followed, then we need to reiterate the policy.
So then you're not asking for the names?
Yes.
You just asked for the names.
Well, I...
There's no way for us to get this, the names that you're looking for, and not have a part of a public meeting?
Well, let's address comments through the chair.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. My fault.
That's okay.
I'm with you. My fault, too.
The issue is that there is some concern that we're not following policy. The only way to determine that is to determine who the three members, who the three individuals are and which person that Superintendent selected. And, as Mr. Leary is including, was, were one of those three applicants an internal candidate? Now, once a person gets to that point, Your Honor, their name becomes very public because their names get broadcast to all the members of the Personnel Selection Advisory Committee. Their resumes go out to that committee. Everybody in the school knows what their names are. So there's no privacy at that point. So I, while I respect Ms. Martin's concern regarding privacy, at that point, privacy is off the table because they are coming to what is a public interview. Anybody can go to that interview. Yes? We can go to the interview. Anybody can go to that interview.
Can we just clarify that? Is that the case, that interviews are a public process? I mean, I know they are for a Superintendent. I mean, I've been through that. But I, my understanding was that for a principal or an assistant principal, that that's a traditional interview process, like any other corporation or entity would conduct.
Well, I think the distinction might be for finalists. I think that, and I, you know, I don't know the specific policy of the school department, but in many cases, for government jobs, the names are in confidence and protected by personnel records until the person becomes a finalist. Now, I don't know what the policy here says. In fact, I was going to request that, in addition to the report, we get a copy of the policy. And if, Ms. Duggan, do you have any light to shed on this or how, what the process is?
For the Personnel Selection Committee, where a number of candidates have been selected because they have the required job qualifications, certainly, that is an open process. If folks come to me and would like to observe the process, that is acceptable. They cannot observe the deliberations, but they can observe the interviews. So that has been allowed.
I'm sorry. I called you Ms. Duggan. I meant Ms. Mulligan. Mr. Leary?
Just, just a kind of a suggestion. I think names are not, I mean, if I can suggest to the Committee, when Fattacante, names are not as relevant as people who are being promoted from within. If we could even block the names out, just find out if the person was a candidate from within our system, that we can get through that process. And the other part of the motion would be, how many of our folks are actually taking the time to apply for these positions? So I think that's part of the dynamic as well. Thanks.
Okay. So as I read the motion as amended, I don't think it's necessary to necessarily deliver names to the committee as much as it is these factors, who's from within, who's not from within.
The bottom line, Your Honor, is who is from within, meaning who has come up through the system. That is the issue, because there's, there are accusations that we are not following our own policy. And if, and if we're not, then we need to figure out why that is. And if the Superintendent has not followed the policy, then we need to revisit that. So that's the issue. Have people, so we, so I'm looking to go back five years, and I don't think it's going to be all that difficult, because we haven't hired 100 people over the past five years. We've hired maybe a dozen. And, and so getting that information is not all that difficult.
Okay. Any further discussion, Ms. Martin?
I just want, so just to be clear, we're going to be looking at the current employees who were awarded promotions, not necessarily based on their home address, based on their time in, as part of our district.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Leahy?
I just want to be clear, too. Are we looking at, to say that just because you made it to the final and you're from within, you should have been hired? Or are we looking at, I mean, it's got to be subjective here, too. So does, I just want to, I don't want to waste everybody's time and get a report next week and say, this isn't what we wanted. Are we looking for specific, like why I got a person from within and a person from outside, and we picked the outside? Why didn't we pick the inside?
As I've indicated in my discussion, Your Honor, I'm looking at a couple of things. One, have we followed the policy each and every instance? And if we haven't, then I think we are owed an explanation as to why the policy was not followed. And what is the committee going to do about it if the policy was not followed? There has to be some ramification about that. But I need the information in order to make that determination. That's number one. Number two, the Superintendent gave us a guideline packet tonight about personnel hiring policies. In it, she underlines that if a, if two candidates are being looked at and one is from inside the system, that person will be given more consideration. And are we following that?
Ms. Dougherty?
I'd just like to add, I believe that is in cases where you have equal qualifications. And I'd like to refer back to something my colleague said about what exactly are we going to get from this? Because clearly, if we just get this internal candidate got the promotion, or this internal candidate didn't get the promotion, that doesn't speak to qualifications. That's not giving us enough information. So I refer back to what Mr. Leahy said a few minutes ago, that is it enough to just find out whether they were candidates from within or not? Or I believe we do need some information that indicates the qualifications, because you can meet the minimum criteria to apply for a job and not get it because a more qualified candidate, you know, presents better. And I think that information needs to be part of this report. That is my concern.
And, Your Honor, maybe once we get the information, then we can proceed with a dialogue with the Superintendent about exactly what Ms. Dougherty needs to know. I think we need to get the information first. And I don't know why we're afraid of getting information. I don't, I don't, maybe someone can point out to me why we're afraid of getting information. I'm not sure what the concern is.
Well, I'm not sure anyone said they were afraid, but, Ms. Martin?
I'm not terribly afraid.
Okay. Then it should be no problem at all.
And I think getting the information is, you know, it will be much like the information we've already gotten in answer to this, and the information that I'm sure we'll be looking for in another month. And we can ask the question in innumerable ways and get the same results. I think that we can look at this for what it's worth. It will be a listing of candidate A, B, C, and it will indicate that the most qualified candidate got the position. And I think that, you know, whatever discussions we want to have afterwards, once we get this information, I think we need to be prepared to recognize that the policy, as stated and as implemented, has indeed been adhered to. And I think that, again, we've had that information, we've had it delivered to us in a number of different ways. This latest one does, does not strike fear in me in any way. And I think that the more times we want to say out loud and in public that we adhere to our policies, I think the better off it is for all of the community to understand exactly what the status is of our hiring practices.
Okay. Madam Superintendent?
If I could just clarify, the actual, the language of the policy is that, all factors being equal, preference for promotional appointments will be given to those employees within the school system. So just want to be clear what the language says. And we'll do our best to get the information.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is approved. Subcommittee reports, the first Subcommittee report is mine on the Task Force on Desegregation. Any objection from me taking it here? All right. So we met Wednesday, September 19, at 6:00 PM to consider several items. One is the impact of the recent Supreme Court decision on school assignment policies, and also a motion that's been brought forth to the committee about the waiting list procedures. We met for about an hour. I want to thank former Superintendent Sappasaris for attending, who I think gave a pretty enlightened presentation about the history of the desegregation consent decree that we currently operate under, how it came to be, the pluses and minuses of that desegregation consent decree, and how it led to the construction of many new schools in the city, et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately, that history took just about the entire hour, and we didn't get much further in the meeting. So we've scheduled to meet again, I believe, on November 7 to, to take this matter up again. I would point out that a party to our consent decree is the State Department of Education, and the state has not issued any instruction or guidelines or guidance as to how they're going to interpret and follow the recent Supreme Court decision. That's particularly relevant, I think, in Lowell, because the State Department of Education is a party to the consent decree we entered in, in court those many years ago. So that's a report of progress on the Task Force meeting, and we will continue to meet on this topic. Motion to accept the report is a report of progress by Ms. Fattacante, second by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted. This next report is from the Curriculum Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of September 24, 2007. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. The Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee did meet on September 24. In attendance were myself and Committeewoman Jackie Dougherty. We also had present from the Central Office Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco and Claire Abrams, our mathematics coordinator. There were a number of other people present as well. As we kind of go through, I guess we can, the first one was Sarah Dryden-Petersen, who is a researcher from the Harvard Graduate School of Education, and that was our first topic that we discussed. Ms. Peterson is, has made a request to the full Subcommittee through the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee to conduct research focusing on the Sub-Saharan African population present in Lowell Public Schools. Her research question is focused around involvement in school and in school activities, how that assists and really impacts families as they enculturate here in, in the greater Lowell area, and what positive benefits it has for the students from those families. Her request is to focus at the Varnum School, which is an individual school in our district that does have a significant African population. She has spoken with staff here at Central Administration and has requested to be able to conduct this research over the course of this next school year. She did very willingly agree that all of her results, while they will be shared with the district, the district itself will not be named, nor will any of the participants in any publications that result from her research. Personally, as we, you know, discussed it, she certainly seemed very earnest, and I think it's a very interesting idea. I think we all recognize the importance of parent involvement across the board, and I think for groups who are new to our, new to our city and new to our country, that any information we can have to help them enculturate and to help assist their students to be successful is valuable information, particularly for our district. So it was a motion by Ms. Dougherty and seconded by myself to recommend this research project to the full committee for their consideration. So I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Sorry. The motion is to allow this research to proceed in the Lowell school system. Ms. Fattacante, is there a second on the motion? Ms. Dougherty seconds. Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. After reviewing the request for the research proposal, there were a couple of issues about it that I just cannot vote for. First, I need to know more about how she will seek out these children. And the second thing that she indicated was that she is actually going to sit in classrooms and observe. I'm absolutely opposed to that. She can interview students after she's, after they've been selected, but she cannot impose herself in a classroom in the Lowell Public Schools. There's just too much going on to have a person sitting there observing. One, Your Honor, it is a violation of the privacy of the children in that classroom. And secondly, it is, it is, I just, I absolutely cannot agree with it. And if she wants to do this study, that's fine, but she will have to abide by not coming into a Lowell Public School classroom. There was no discussion of whether or not she'd be quarried, if we, if she's going to come into the schools. That, the person, the committee did not discuss that at all. But I have a strong, strong problem with her just insinuating herself in a Lowell Public School classroom. I cannot, I just, I feel very uncomfortable about it.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Just to respond to a couple of the concerns, obviously, this individual would adhere to all the current volunteer policies that are in place throughout our district, which do not allow any individual to enter into our, into our buildings as a volunteer in any other capacity without being quarried. Having been through this, we've, we had updated our quarry policies to ensure the safety of our students when there is anyone, as part of our, you know, outside the traditional teacher population or staff population. So I can say with great assurance that the quarry is, perhaps we shouldn't assume those things, that they just exist in our policies, but they do, and for that specific purpose. I can understand the concerns about having, I guess, an individual in a, in a classroom. My sense from her conversations was that she was extremely amenable to working with the leadership at the Varnum to ensure that her research and her activity was not going to be detrimental in any way and would not certainly be distracting. I think that, you know, like many other research proposals, and whether it's education or anything else, the role of the observer is to observe and not to interact with the subjects in those kind of environments. When a classroom environment, she would not be interacting or interrupting what was, what was going on in the classroom. She convinced me of the value of this research, and I think I can say for the other member of the Subcommittee, that we were impressed with her approach and with the information that we hope to glean from the research. And I think that she has done her best to ensure that she will do so in a, obviously, professional and very thoughtful way in working with the staff at the Varnum. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, I'd just like to add one thing that I noticed in her presentation. If you look on the page two of three of the document that she gave us, under number two, participation of the Lowell Public Schools, she refers a number of times in the second paragraph to her interaction with parents. She's going to go to parent-teacher meetings, attend school functions, that really, her focus is on the parents and how their involvement in the school helps the children's success. And her last sentence in that section, number two, is, "I do not plan to interview any children." I don't know how important the observing of the classrooms is to this research for her. I personally didn't have a problem with it, but certainly, if that's a major issue for other colleagues, we could go back to her and say, with that stipulation. My sense from her was that she really is focusing on the parent issue, and as has been said earlier, clearly, with many of our immigrant children in our schools, and especially our newcomers, it's been a challenge that we, as a district, have had in terms of getting more parents involved in their children's education. So I felt that this would be a very important learning piece for us in terms of how we go forward and continue to try to engage parents as much as we can. So I, like I said, I personally didn't have strong feelings against observing the children, but I think that the parent piece is really the focus in this research, and I still recommend it as something we should allow to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to allow this research to proceed? All right. I think we need a roll call, then.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ma'am Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
No.
Six yeas, one aye, approved.
Your Honor, through you, to the Superintendent, I would expect that if she sits in a classroom, we should be notifying children's parents in that classroom so that they are fully aware that there is an observer in the classroom. Children have rights of privacy. We may not think so, but they do. They have rights of privacy.
Ms. Martin, for the balance of the Subcommittee report?
Absolutely. Thank you. The remainder of the meeting was focused on updates to our mathematics program across the district. We did have a number of different topics that we were covering. I'll do my best to kind of get through them. The first one was an update on the Summer Math Academy, the conclusions of the results of that program. This is our second summer where we've offered this as an additional support program for, for students who are making the transition from middle school to high school. I think one of the, the most important results that we saw was that we did see an increase in the number of students who are making the move directly from eighth grade algebra courses to honors Algebra II courses in their freshman year. And I think that one of the other, and I suppose this isn't terribly shocking, other things we found out was that we dramatically increased the attendance in the summer program when we communicated directly with parents rather than going through students to try and entice them to spend their summer doing algebra. So that was a important, I guess, improvement. The second topic that we did discuss was the algebra and pre-algebra teaching that's going on at our middle schools, that we have approximately 700 students who are in the algebra itself courses or the pre-algebra, who are getting the approximately 30 minutes per day on that topic, those specific topics, in addition to the 60 minutes a day that are, that are the traditional eighth grade, seventh, eighth grade math programming, and that there really has been the improvement and the increase in numbers of students who qualify for those, for those additional classes, has been noted, both by Central Administration, but also by the teachers and principals at those, at the middle school level. The, at the elementary school, we did review some of the changes that were made to the investigations materials, curriculum materials that we have in place. It was an effort to update those materials to provide students with a handbook that not only helped them through the learning process, but also allowed them to engage their parents in that process, so that this, this kind of handbook workbook goes back and forth, and, and parents can get some really helpful information about how to assist their, their children, whether it's homework or, or ongoing issues in the classroom. The connected math also was, which is the middle school program, was also updated, particularly in grade six and grade seven, with some updated units based on the publisher, the developer of this, this curriculum package. The curriculum guides have been updated, so that, again, teachers are receiving the most up-to-date information. These also featured improvements in terms of differentiated instruction to give them some additional resources to use in the classroom to ensure that each individual student that they're working with is taking in the material in their own way and able to be successful with it. We talked about the benchmark assessments. These are the power standards that we use to gauge progress over the course of the year. It's used at both the elementary and middle schools, so that we do have these specific knowledge points that we're able to track over the course of the year in every single grade, to be able to assure that those fundamental mathematic concepts and literacy elements are being achieved over the course of the year. We discussed the elementary report cards. I actually had a question, and I don't know if the Superintendent can answer this for me now, because it did occur to me after the fact, but the timeline on that, we are anticipating that that will be available in this first reporting period. Is that accurate?
I believe so, but I'd want to double-check with the Deputy Superintendent.
If you could double-check on that, that would be good information. My sense is that, I got that sense from the meeting as well, but I just wanted to be sure. I know that it can be a sometimes complicated process to make the transition, especially when what we're trying to do is really target the information... when what we're trying to do is really target the information we're giving, giving to parents, so that it can be connected very clearly to the mathematic concepts that are being covered in the classroom, which, much like we had done with English Language Arts, I think has been extremely successful in our ability to communicate more effectively with parents, exactly what their children are learning and focused on in the classroom. Our eighth topic in the math arena was improving the parent notices that are going home. This was something that had happened last year, I think with moderate success. I know that there were some kind of logistical issues in getting the paperwork to schools so that it could be distributed effectively, but this year, it certainly, we've had the time to put this process in place, so every parent in the Lowell Public Schools of a student kindergarten through eighth grade will be getting periodic updates as to what the topics are that are being discussed, that are being taught in their child's classroom, along with a little information, again, to help them make the connections with their, with their child around the, around the curriculum topics. Number nine, we were informed that there was a, thanks to a collaboration with Lowell High School TV, we were able to develop a half-hour video focused on parents to help them and offer information, again, in making the connections with their student, with their, with their children, in terms of what the investigation's curriculum entails, and how they can participate in that and help support it from home. And the final topic that we covered was the changing role of the math specialists. Because of budget constraints, we have had to reduce the number of individuals working in the district in this capacity, from four down to two, as we can all, we all are aware of. That really does stymie in a lot of ways our efforts to do district-wide work around the, the mathematic, the mathematics curriculum. I do think that the staff has certainly done a great deal to try and improve and really expand the work that's happening at the school-based level, and also particularly with the district math specialists and our math resource teachers who are in place across the district. I think that time will tell, that the conclusion of this year, we'll be able to have a better sense of how effective that has been, and if that, that budget choice needs to be revisited. But I do think that it has been a very real effort on the part of all of our mathematic teachers and specialists and across the district to work particularly hard in ensuring that it doesn't impact students, that at the end of the, at the end of the day, our students are getting the most high-quality mathematics instruction. Despite the length of the report, it really wasn't that long a meeting, so I apologize for taking so much time tonight, but I would submit that as a report of progress to the full committee for their review. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. The next subcommittee report is the joint meeting of the Discipline and Safety Subcommittee's report, an approval of the minutes of September 25, 2007. Mr. McHugh is chair of the Discipline Subcommittee. Ms. Fattacante is the chair of Safety. Who's going to give the report? Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. At this meeting, it was held on September 25 at 7:00 in the central office. From the Safety Subcommittee was the chair, Ms. Fattacante. Jackie Doherty was present, and Connie Martin. From the Discipline and the Alternative Schools Subcommittee, the chairperson was myself, along with Ms. Fattacante, as being a member, and John Leahy. Also in attendance was James Leary, and from the School Department was Ann Murphy. I think I just want to take a second just to explain to the public, this is something that came up probably late, early spring last year, where the school committee was talking about, is there an age appropriation setting for a child to determine at what age can they stay in a grade level? So in essence, I kind of looked at, how many times can they stay back, or if a newcomer comes to Lowell and from another country, and we have to place them at a grade level. It's important that I think that we looked at where they'd be placed, and it has to be in relation to their age as well, because we didn't want to see children with a huge age gap in the same setting, for, I think, safety and reasons more important as some other things. So we originally, in the spring, received a draft policy. We asked the administration to look out, and they could not find any school systems with an actual policy for it, so they proposed a draft at that time, and it was sent back to the subcommittee, because I think there were some issues that the, a number of the members had, including myself. The most important was, one I thought, was there was going to be a proposed three-year age differential that would be allowed, and I didn't believe that that was the most important age gap. I thought it was too large. I think two is adequate, and I think some of the other members felt the same way. So we sent it off to the subcommittee to talk about that, as well as some other items that were addressed. We had an original meeting in late spring and early June, I believe, and then we continued to talk about this, and it finally came to this meeting. So at this meeting, it was a very productive meeting. We actually made some, we have the new policy, which is policy, it's actually Age Appropriate Educational Settings, Policy JG, which we'll be looking to adopt tonight with the recommended changes. And it actually, one of the changes we are recommending at, that it states that nobody beyond the age of 21 would be eligible to receive an education, would, it'd be at that point turned over to the Adult Education, the Lowell Adult Education Program, which is a great program. That way, we'd have a setting for those children. There is one exception, that would be for special needs children, who the LA has a different age for those children, would be still allowed to stay in, as we would call the mainstream classroom settings or in the regular buildings. The second item we talked about was the age differential between themselves and their peers in the classroom, and the average typical age would be no more than two years, and I think that's what the committee was really struggling with, and it came to an agreement. So it would not be three years, it would only be two years between themselves and their peers in the classroom, some age setting. Also, there is a process that was put in place, that there would be an age appropriation setting form that would have to go through an approval process. So if a child is approaching that, they would actually go through a process where the principal would fill out this recommendation form, and it also looks at some, a number of points. There's like eight points that was developed to really look at. The most important one is, I think, the academic, the students' behavior, and including their attendance. I think that's an important one. If the child is, wants to stay with that setting and stay with those children, if they're not in school, if they have bad grades and they have behavioral problems, you know, we would have a way not to allow them to stay. So that is the first indicator that they'll be looking at, as far as making this overall recommendation to keep their child in the, the grade level. They'll also be looking at the, some other issues that are involved. And finally, that approval form will be sent to the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services for final approval, who will actually have the ultimate say. So I think this would allow us to, also importantly, for the administration to have a second look, so the principal just wouldn't be making a decision without the administration knowing, and has a way for the administration to keep tabs on the number of students that fall into this setting. And finally, as part of the policy, there'll be a notation placed on the student information records that will note this, so as the student continues down the path towards graduation, this will be a little, like a little bit of a flag, so people could actually notice if they're talking about this student again. So with that said, I will open up to anyone who has any discussion on it, but there is a policy, a new policy, JG, that's here for adoption of the committee. It's been modified since the one that we saw in the spring. We also have some attached information on the number of students, and we have attached also the Age Appropriate Setting Determination Form, which would be an exhibit part of the policy. So with that said, I would move that we adopt this policy as amended.
All right. So motion to adopt the revised policy as recommended by the Subcommittee, by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was a concern of mine, as it was a concern of my colleagues, because it, my concern was having somebody who was 17 years old in the eighth grade. And I would imagine that parents would be concerned about that, or having somebody who was 21 in, as a junior in high school. We shortened the requirement down to two years, so you cannot, you cannot be two, two years older than the average grade level, and I think that I felt a lot more comfortable regarding going up to the age of 21. If a youngster had been continuously in school, progressing along with classmates, maybe it had an illness, had some kind of issue which kept them out of school for a certain period of time, they stayed back, but yet they were continuously a Lowell School student, and they were approaching the age of 21, we would be, we would retain them. If they were not continuously a Lowell School student, as Mr. McHugh has indicated, and they were a newcomer, they were a problem with attendance, they were a problem with discipline, then they would be referred to go to adult ed. We're not saying we're not going to educate people. What we're saying is, we want, it's a safety issue, and it's a discipline issue, and that, and that parents need to feel that the child their child is sitting next to is somewhere in the same age bracket. And that, as I said it again, you cannot drive to school, pick up a pack of cigarettes, a six-pack of beer, and sit next to a 16-year-old. That's not okay. I feel far more comfortable with this policy than I did with, with the fact that we had no policy whatsoever. And we're the first common, we're the first city in the Commonwealth to have a policy like this. So I think that others will follow suit if, if they so choose, if they have the same kind of concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay.
Since the report is...
Mr. McHugh?
Yes, thank you. The next item that we discussed was regarding arrest on school grounds. We actually came up with, the administration came up with a student arrest guidelines and procedures that are attached, and everyone has a copy of them. This was discussed at length as well, as far as a way to set forth how we're going to handle them. And more importantly, we reviewed a lot of the situations that happen, the types of arrests, how many were suspended, how many were expelled. The School Department Attorney was being present at the disciplinary hearings, and we have procedures in place for students to re-emit themselves, and from this, we also will be getting a report every month, listing all of this. And there was a motion made by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty, to accept the guidelines for disciplinary proceedings for principals to follow when a student has been arrested on school grounds, and for the Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services to provide a monthly report to the school committee on the number of arrests, expulsion hearings, and students re-admitted following a long-term suspension of school, grade, age, and offense. And that was voted 6-0 by everybody that was present. So we will move forward to adopt that as well.
So motion to adopt this policy by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Further discussion on that motion? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes, and finally, just to be brief, it's something that we're going to continue to talk about, it's the attendance policy. If we looked at the policy, we looked at the student handbooks, it doesn't seem to be consistent, and it seems to be, you know, at different levels, different number of days that they can be allowed to be absent. I think, you know, one of the sticking point is, obviously, at the high school, because we talked about that in relation to the buyback program. I believe we should have a stringent program, and some of the members aren't quite, but I think at this point, we're going to continue to discuss this. It'll be staying in the Subcommittee until we get some further information, and where we can continue to come up with something, I think, where the committee can bring forward back for a recommendation for approval. So I do believe we should have some type of consistent guidelines, but I don't think they have to be the same number of days absent for a middle schooler or an elementary person as the high school. I mean, it's my personal belief that, you know, if the student's in school, it's important to have them there so they can learn. I mean, we have the excused absence, which seems to be a little bit of an issue as well, what's an excuse and what's not, and it seems that maybe that's too tight, and I think that this Subcommittee will continue to look at that and address those issues. So I would offer that as a report of progress.
Thank you. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Mr. Leary. Mr. Leary?
Yeah, quickly, I agree we need to get additional data. I think that's pretty excellent idea, but I think consistency is important here. And I don't mean matching, I mean consistent, in terms of developing from K through four, developing right in through the middle school years into the high school. I appreciate that we'll be working hard on this, and that this was my motion, we put in place a little while ago to review this. I appreciate getting the additional data so we can make intelligent choices, but consistency is kind of important. So I'm, I'm definitely going to be sticking with my opinion on that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that as we move ahead with this, I think we really need to take a look at the attendance office at the high school, because that needs to be built back up again. I think the, with the cuts over the last few years, that to make a dent in the, well, to make real progress with the attendance at the high school, I think we really need to focus on that office as we go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved, and the report is accepted. Under reports of the superintendent, there are several this evening. The first on school safety. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Martin. On school safety, you have a report updating the committee on some of the continued expansion of our collaboration with the police and fire department. Of particular note, our assistant business manager, Mike Cassidy, and staff from the Lowell Police Department collaborated on a successful grant that will bring $54,000 to the city, that the school department will match, so that we can expand our video camera system across more of the high school facilities, and also, very importantly, install locks and re-key the locking systems in a number of our schools, so that they can meet the highest standards of, of safety. We certainly know, as we've done the drills of soft lockdowns, hard lockdowns, we've identified in various schools, even our, some of our newest schools, were not designed in terms of locking systems to meet the, the current highest standards for, for safety. So we're really happy to be able to get this additional financial support to be able to do that. Recently, Assistant Superintendent Ann Murphy and Mr. Cassidy and I met with Fire Chief Ed Pitta and Police Chief Ken LaValle to review a whole range of our protocols and to make plans, very specific plans, for expanding our safety initiatives this year. One of the topics we talked about were the assignments and responsibilities of the school resource officers, including the added school resource officer at the middle schools. And so I think we've now developed, in collaboration with the police, a way to, for good coverage across all of our middle schools, and a clear system of responsibility and communication, so that we can bring more of the benefits of school resource officers to all of our middle schools. The report also outlines some of the steps taken with the District Attorney's Office and the Police Department to revise our memorandum of understanding with the Police Department, and a variety of other steps in place. Welcome any questions or comments.
Mr. McHugh?
Just briefly, through you, through Mr. Mayor, to the Superintendent. Has all our staff been, that should be trained, have been trained on this new camera system? I know we had an issue over the summer where they, there was something about, there was no, the training wasn't provided, or they weren't all trained, and they was trying to save some video, and I just would like to ensure that we've gotten all the folks trained that need to be knowing how to use the system and save files, so when we do have an incident, they can put it aside, because I think, it was my understanding, after so many days, it just disappears and gets overwritten.
I'll have to get that information for you, and obviously make sure that it gets done, if it's not, if it has not already been done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. You know, first off, I have to say, I think it's, it's great to see us working so closely with the, the public safety, both fire and, and police here in the city, and I think it strengthens certainly our ability to protect our students and our staff, and to have, to have these, I think, very necessary precautions in place. The one thing that I was curious about was, this grant, as I'm reading it, for the $58, $54,000, does have a match requirement of $109,000. Could you tell me how that's going to, is that a, I know it says that we're absorbing it, I'm assuming that means some of it, not all of it?
The, the match was 54 from the grant, 54 from the school department, and it's coming out of our capital allocation, so it's a big percentage of our capital allocation will go to this. So that was a priority that I think the committee made clear last year, was to do everything we could to bring all of our billings up to standard for this, and so instead of having to spend $110,000 out of the capital budget for it, we only have to spend $54,000.
Okay, which we had certainly determined to be necessary.
Right.
I mean, especially the keying, and I mean, all those things that need to happen.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty, did you have something on this?
Yes, sir, your honor, I just had a quick question. The, under number two, you say, D, plan for visits with tours by sector police at neighborhood schools. Can you explain what that, what that means, what that's going to be?
Sure. Chief LaValle started this actually last, last spring. He wants to make sure that the sector police are very familiar with the facilities and the sites and the people in the schools, so that if there is an emergency, and they're the first responders to a school, they're familiar with it. He gave last spring the interesting example of the Stocklosa School, which if you don't know it, and you just have seen it in a building, you might think that the main door is on Broadway. But in fact, the main entrance is, you know, inside the building, and the sector police didn't know that initially. So one of the first things they learned when they did a tour of the new Stocklosa was, oh, we're going to have to go around there to the other side, and, you know, minutes in an emergency, you know, thirty seconds or a minute can spell all the difference. It's also to make sure that the, the police in the sector, that the neighborhood police are familiar with the principal, the assistant principal, know the layout of the school, so that, so that if they are the first responders, they, they're in a position to be knowledgeable and helpful. And so we're continuing that, and, you know, we're, it's, it's an example of the chief's proactive approach to collaboration and to school safety. It's been a delight to work with both Chief Pitta and Chief LaValle. They really are very responsive and forward-thinking in how to be ahead of the curve as much as one can in the world of school safety.
Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. Just one other comment is, if we have access to this grant in the future again, I know we're working with the high school on a plan for the alternative high school, so maybe we can try to meet some of their needs, if we're able to access this again in the future.
I do, some cameras are being installed in our alternative schools, so that we are in the process of expanding, expanding those, those resources, which will be helpful.
Mr. Larry.
Just, and I appreciate that, I think, in line with what you're saying, I don't know if we can make a motion, or that we actually make a plan to put these in place formally, because I had a conversation with the director of Lowell, we don't have video cameras right now, and that'd be a good idea, if not through a grant, but actually take some of our own cash and put this in, because I think that's imperative. So I put in a frame of a motion that the superintendent come back with a recommendation, how to access the funds to require, to get the process going regarding video cameras at the, well, at all alternative high schools, in terms of, in terms of priority. I don't know if you'd second that.
Second.
This is a new motion?
Yes, motion to suspend the rules.
I'm sorry, motion to suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules.
To suspend by Ms. Fatakante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Any objection to the rule suspension? Okay, state, if you could just restate it, please, I'm sorry.
Request the superintendent provide a plan in place to implement or place video cameras at all of our alternative schools.
Second.
And the funds to come up with.
I second that part, too.
All right. Mr. McHugh.
Yes, I think, I think it's a good motion, I actually definitely support it. I think what he's trying to say is, we really need to have a plan in place, so should the funds come available, we've already prioritized all the items, it's just a matter of moving forward. So instead of someone saying, we can get these funds, what do we do with them?
Right.
We say, we want this school next, this school next, so we're not just jumping on something. So maybe that's something Mr. Cassidy could work on. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. At a subcommittee about, well, I don't know how many months ago, but we, this should be in process with the high school, with the high school subcommittee. It was a long meeting that night, and we talked about a lot of the alternative schools, and what we were doing, where we were going. So even though we do have the motion on now, this should be in process, so maybe this will expedite it. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Motion to accept the report from the superintendent by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. The next report is a report on the Department of Ed's two-year review of the Sullivan Middle School. I see Ms. Lebrun here this evening, and thank you for your patience. Madam Superintendent.
Um, yes, as the, as the school committee is well aware, the Department of Education declared the Sullivan Middle School an underperforming school for mathematics in 2004. It's always been interesting, I think, to note that the Sullivan School has always been in good standing in English Language Arts. So it's never not made its adequate yearly progress target in, in, in English Language Arts. But its math scores were really stagnant for a long period of time, and that's what caused the, caused the declaration of underperformance. I think the day after the last school committee meeting, we received the department's report on its two-year review. The report was late, so there, it was built on information gathered last spring. So it's before they knew anything about MCAS scores, which is, which is interesting, because they predicted that the MCAS scores would go up based on what they, what they saw. And we know, we know that Sullivan School made its adequate yearly progress target for 2007, for the spring 2007 MCAS tests. They made it in the aggregate and also for every single subgroup. So it, so of course, it had fallen behind, so that was a big leap that the school had to make, and it achieved that. If it makes it again in 2008, then it will, then the Sullivan will be declared a school in good standing. But the report was really very helpful, and very, very encouraging, and very praising of the work of the leadership and faculty at the school, and of the district staff that provided support along the way. It was a really unqualified positive report in terms of the work underway at the school. And I just quote a couple of lines. The team found that the Sullivan Middle School has strong practices of using data to refine and modify instruction, refine the curriculum, adjust pacing, monitor student progress, and provide specific interventions to ensure that students at different levels master the standards. The school has strong instructional leadership and a staff that's focused on improving student achievement. Instructional leaders provide a clear mission and direction while promoting teacher input, collegiality, buy-in, and collaboration. And then it goes on to make some sort of predictions about what will, what will happen next. And so we're, I think the report recognizes the really hard work, the really constructive response of the faculty to the challenges imposed when they got the label of underperforming. And, and it's really, I think, a tribute to, to the leadership at the Sullivan and the staff at the Sullivan, that they've, that they earned such a strong report, and then, and then saw results also in terms of MCAS testing. So the, the report pointed out some areas in need of improvement, and those, those are in progress. For example, during this period, we've been developing the mathematics benchmark testing program. And because it's been in development, it hasn't been the same one year to the next to the next. So its usefulness, it's just starting now to be useful, as we have refined it and gotten it, gotten it working well, but it still needs some continued refinement. And there are a couple of other, for example, they described it, updating job descriptions for key instructional leadership roles. One of those we actually dealt with in negotiations, the last negotiations, that after this report, the, and we, when we negotiated the math resource teacher position, we took care of that particular issue. So there's still ones to work on, but overall, the report was exceedingly positive, and I wanted to express my appreciation to the faculty and leadership of the Sullivan Middle School.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Questions or comments from the committee? Mr. McHugh.
Just briefly, I too would like to echo the superintendent's remarks, and thank the teachers over at the school and the administration at the school for, I think, taking, taking the bull by the horns and, and working hard to focus on the student achievement. I think, I happened to go to the open house last week over there, and it was nice to see a bunch of parents, and the teachers were excited, and it was nice to see the teachers really excited and expressing, you know, what the children are learning, and they really talked about the math, they talked about the English and ELA and the writing, and how much, and they explained to the parents, you know, how much is going on, and it was nice to see. It was a, a nice night, and, as it was a good turnout from parents, too, it's, you know, there always could be more, but I think it's a good start, and I can see that, you know, that things are heading in the right direction, and I just want to see that continue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any further discussion on the report? Motion to accept the report by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Larry. Do we want to hear from Ms. Lebrun at all, or do you have any? Sure.
I also just wanted, first of all, thanking this committee to allow me to just say a few words, because the one population that we've forgotten to mention in all this, certainly the teachers absolutely rolled up their sleeves and dug into the hard work at hand, and they've not stopped for a minute. They know that I'm a taskmaster, but one who's more than willing to roll up her sleeves and do the same thing. But I definitely want to applaud our students, who believed in all of us and in all of our work, and they really dug in, and they've put forth their best effort every single day at the school. And they have a definite can-do attitude that supports all of us in our growth and work every day, and I don't want to forget that population, because the report didn't look at them, but I get the joy of seeing them every single day, and that is one group that I definitely need to acknowledge. So thank you for letting me do that. And the teachers know how much I love their hard work, and I celebrate it with them every minute of every day that I'm in that building. Thank you for letting me do this.
Okay. Thank you, congratulations. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Next report, Madam Superintendent, on Lowell High School Library.
Um, yes, in response to a committee motion that we explore the feasibility of expanding student access to the Lowell High School library after school hours, you have a, a report that we are piloting an added half-hour of time after school, so that, starting this week, it started on Monday, the library remains open until 4:05 in the afternoon, an hour and a half after school, and we will pilot that and to monitor usage, but we are cautiously optimistic that it will be very well-used by students. The receipt of the Shannon Grant Funds actually has enabled us to make a modest reallocation of local funds to make this possible.
Thank you. Any discussion on the report?
Move approval as a report of progress, Your Honor.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fatakante, seconded by Mr. Larry. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Next report on college attendance scholarships for student athletes.
Um, yes, we reported last spring on the class of 2006 student athletes, and reported that, that in that class, 95% of the students went on to attend two- or four-year institutions. And the, the, the high school set themselves an ambitious goal of repeating that 95% accomplishment for a student athlete group that had grown by more than 30%. So this, this year, the class of 2007 had 186 senior athletes, considerably larger than the class of 2006. There's a 30% increase in minority student athletic participation in the class of 2000 as well. So a much larger group of students, and, and you have a report that indicates that they achieved a 90% attendance rate of two-year and four-year colleges. And that doesn't include the nine students who entered the military, which is another form of education as well. But we didn't, we couldn't count that as a two- or four-year college, but we come awfully close to the 95%, if we include those youngsters that are, entered the military. And in terms of direct athletic scholarships, you have the information from the athletic director, Brian Martin, that two students, two students earned scholarships for crew, one young man to Gonzaga, and one of our young women athletes to Duquesne, one of our students earned a football scholarship to the University of Rhode Island, and one of our student athletes from the class of 2007 earned a scholarship to Holy Cross for soccer. So that is the report on the class of 2007. They are, they're setting high goals and working very, very hard to achieve them. Welcome any questions.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. And I really did just want to say thank you. I know that we had initially asked for this information before the end of the school year, and then had kind of sent back for some additional backup information, so I really do appreciate the time that went into compiling all of this. I think it's, I think it's great to see that our student athletes are being successful in their primary purpose, of course, which is receiving the, the best education that certainly we can give them, and to prepare them to, to go on and continue their educations beyond Lowell High School. So I just wanted to say, thank you very much to the, to the staff at the high school who helped compile the report, and more importantly, thank you to the many coaches and teachers and other staff members who made these achievements possible for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the report? Motion to accept by Ms. Fatakante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Next on publications, Madam Superintendent.
Um, yes, in response to a motion directing me to develop a uniform look, if you will, for district publications, we've developed the seal that will appear on all district reports, publications, and letterhead. It incorporates the City of Lowell seal in the center, and then, and then using the, the Lowell colors of maroon and gray, it, it clearly identifies the seal as the seal of the Lowell Public Schools. You have examples of the, the seal and the letterhead there. We're putting together the final proof of it, so that it'll be exactly round when it is, when it is completed. But I wanted to give the committee a preview of what the, what it will look like. Here's a, not quite 100% round, but a view of the seal that we're planning to use. Welcome any comments or suggestions.
Because if we go to a room, then we will have somebody asking, "Maroon."
It's, it's not maroon, so let's be careful with the color.
I believe this color has been checked.
And that got selected long before I ever got here.
Right.
And I believe it's called Cardinal Red, something.
We'll make sure that's exactly the right color.
It's not maroon.
Fine.
Thanks.
Okay. Motion to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Larry. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Next report is the visit of the Minister of Cambodia. Madam Superintendent. I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, you're...
Okay, and I understand this is not a huge issue. I would just like to say, you know, having made comments about the quality of our publications and wanting to have a singular body of literature that allows us to identify public school materials immediately, you know, I think the logo is super, I really, the, the report sample that you gave as a cover sheet, I think is fabulous. I love the way that looks, and I think it really, it adds, you know, it adds a professionalism to the, the materials that we're actually creating, and I think that's important. And I think anything that comes out from our district that's going, whether it's to families, or to businesses, or just the greater community, I really think it's critically important that we do have that singular kind of visual image that, that lends the credence to whatever comes from the Lowell Public Schools. So I thank you very much for pulling that together.
Thank you. I think we already approved the motions. Madam Superintendent, next report.
Um, yes, Dr. Koh Feng from, who's the Minister of Education in Cambodia, came, visited Lowell. He came straight from the World Bank in Washington to Lowell to visit here, and he was toured, went through a tour at Lowell High School. The students in our culinary arts program had their first challenge of the year, their first meal served was a, was this, was a luncheon, and I know two members of the committee were able to be there. But it was a very promising, promising visit in that a, a change in Cambodian government rules now give the Minister of Education the authority to establish exchanges and relationships directly with schools. And so we finished that luncheon with the headmaster being able to exchange cards and, and Dr. Chia, and so we expect that we'll be able to make, really take advantage of his interest in having a more direct connection between schools in, in Cambodia and the schools here in Lowell. He was really quite thrilled to, to know that 30% of our students are of Southeast Asian descent, the vast majority of them of Cambodian descent. So it was a very nice event, and the high school students showed, showed off the high school very well.
Further question or comment on that report? Ms. Dougherty.
Uh, yes, I'd just like to, through you, ask the superintendent, if you could refresh the committee's understanding about the teachers and administrators who'll be going to Cambodia this summer, because I know there was a lot of excited talk at that meeting... I know there was a lot of excited talk at that meeting about furthering that connection, and I just, I didn't remember what the program was about, so I think that would be good for people to know.
Sure. Last, I think last early winter or sometime in the late winter, I reported to the school committee that we had opportunity to have a group of our teachers and administrators participate in a summer seminar series on Vietnam and Cambodia run by Primary Source, which is a Boston-based organization, that, very well-respected organization, and that we hoped that as many of 10 of the teachers and administrators would be able to participate in a grant-funded, a grant-funded excursion in the summer of 2008 to Vietnam and Cambodia to see firsthand the culture, learn the history, meet people, really see what's going on in the country, and then bring back to us, use that resource as well as what they've been working on this year of developing curriculum units that can be integrated into specific areas that match the curriculum frameworks here in Massachusetts, to be able to be plugged into particularly relevant grade levels and subjects so that we can bring a rigorous and rich curriculum integration that brings the culture and literature of Cambodia and history of Cambodia into our curriculum. So with the teachers, I was getting emails this summer from teachers and administrators who participated in the summer seminar series. They were just thrilled by it. They're very excited at its quality, very excited, and we learned just last week, just last week, that we have secured private grant funding that will enable 10 of our staff to go on essentially all expenses paid summer study trip this summer there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the report by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Leahy? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. The next is the quarterly report on motions.
Yes. Each quarter, I prepare for the committee an update on the status of the motions that have been, the motions as they stand as of this date. Welcome. Any questions?
Any questions or discussion on this report? Motion to accept by Ms. Fatakante, second by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Next is the, there is home education. Madam Superintendent.
Yes. A request for a parent seeking permission to home educate her child. And this is something that requires a school committee approval. It's been reviewed by our Office of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, brought forward as a recommendation.
Is there a motion to approve the request by Ms. Dougherty, second by Ms. Martin? Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatakante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. Next is the personnel report.
Yes. This is the, once a month, you receive the personnel report of retirements, resignations, and new hires.
Move approval, Your Honor?
Motion to approve by Ms. Fatakante, second by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Under new business, there are several items. The first is adoption of revised school committee personnel policies. I did have.
I have some questions, too, Your Honor.
Okay. You want to, well, let me, my overriding question is, I don't see anything that this has been approved by council, and so until that, you know, we get some sort of memo or something on that, I'd recommend delaying action, but why don't you proceed with your issues?
Thank you, Your Honor. If we go to, under the Corey requirements, page two of five, we're looking at section A, is that correct? Section A? Okay. B, here, there's a glitch here. Employees will receive 30 days' notice from the superintendent prior to Corey check being performed. Upon being notified, employees are required to sign a Corey authorization form. Signing a Corey authorization form is a mandatory condition of employment. What this doesn't say is if the employee does not sign the form, will there be a repercussion? There has to be, because it states that it's a condition of employment. But nowhere in this document does it close the loop and say if employee does not sign the form, this is the result of what will happen to the, it doesn't say, it leaves that out. And that's a huge gap, because everybody's going to say, you know, the heck with that, I'm not going to sign the Corey form, and no one signs it, and nothing happens. So I think we have to close the loop on that particular item. And if we're saying it's a condition of employment, then what we then have to say is any employee who doesn't sign the form will be notified that their employment will be terminated within 30 days, or whatever, whatever we choose that policy to be. There was one other issue, through, Your Honor, to the superintendent. It was on page four of five, the same section. The first, second, third paragraph, it says, "The superintendent shall amend employment applications." I'd prefer that that say, "The school committee shall amend." We got caught unawares last time, and I think this school committee needs to know. Obviously, the superintendent would recommend a policy, but I don't want a unilateral change in employment application without the school committee knowing about that. So I think that that should say, "The school committee with recommendation to the superintendent, with recommendation from the superintendent shall amend employment applications." This way, we know what we're amending it to or amending it from, or whatever, Your Honor. Those are my only two issues.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? I mean, in light of those concerns and my concerns, would there be any objection to just referring this matter back to the superintendent?
Make a motion to refer the document back to the superintendent for further review?
So moved by Ms. Fatakante, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The matter is referred back to the superintendent to address those concerns.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Under new business, we also have adoption of the superintendent's 2007-2008 priority goals. What's the wish of the committee? Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I just threw you to, I don't know if this goes to superintendent or the chair, number five, I had a question on that goal. Was that?
I would actually probably say it would go to the chair, and then he can decide who should answer it. How's that?
Well.
I have a question on the goal. Looks a little different, I thought, than at the night we discussed it. Is this the same goal? All right, because I didn't think it was, I thought it was worded differently. This kind of, this sounds like it's just information, but the goal, I thought, I don't have my notes with me, I thought the goal was more, I can't remember actually what it was.
Like the actual crafting of the budget? Is that?
Well, maybe you're thinking about the trade-offs and things that we've considered in the past. I know that was discussed at the meeting, and I assume that's part of this, but maybe that's not your concern. I'm not.
All right. It just, I mean, I know we agreed as a committee, we narrowed it down, and we got down to five goals out of eight or nine. I just want to make sure that was it. Number five goal, I just kind of look at that as part of your requirements anyway, so that's why I wasn't sure when I read it. You normally give us all the, you're supposed to give us all the information we need anyways. That's why I just was wondering why that was on there, but I could be wrong, so.
Mr. McHugh?
I have the sheet. I brought it. And I think it says the same thing, it's just worded differently. The one that we were handed that night says, "Identify FY '09 budget options and recommendations that will enable the system to continue to make progress in achieving the five-year goals and indicate is most critical to improve student achievement." That's exactly what it said on the list that we handed that night. I think it's just phrased differently.
Well, it talks about options, right, in there, and I would say that's the.
Budget options, yes.
Right.
Is there?
Mr. Leary.
Is there an issue of just not using this language?
I'm happy to use that language.
Mr. Leary, do you have a comment?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. The first, I guess, I thought we were going to discuss this again in the subcommittee, because I had a lot of particular questions with this, maybe I misinterpreted it. But the first question I had was the first percentage point. I think we had 78% of the first-year freshmen will earn promotion to sophomore status, up from 75.2. I thought we were going to go higher in the realm of 80 to 85%. I don't know if 85 might be realistic or not, but 80%, it's only like a 3%, less than a 3% increase. Some of the other issues regarding the mathematics on the MCAS, a 5% aggregate, I thought it was a little bit higher than 5%, I thought it was in the realm of 10%, and it was an aggregate number. So I don't know if other folks, if other committee members have additional concerns. I'm not going to vote for this at this point, because I don't think, especially the first one, 78% promotion is a high enough goal. We're talking not performance, we're talking bonus. I mean, it's a difference, in my opinion, the distinction between one's performance and one's bonus approval is a major distinction. I know other folks don't take it that way, but I do. I think performance, you can have excellent performance, but if there's specific goals that you're trying to achieve, they should be somewhat of a challenge, not an impossible challenge, but still nonetheless, a challenge. So I can't, unless we can go through this again at some point, I'm not going to vote for it at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
If I could just perhaps make the suggestion that it is something that we can bring back to the personnel subcommittee, again, encouraging all members to be a participant in that conversation, not just the subcommittee itself, because I think it is something that we all need to weigh in on, and we need to kind of ensure that the dialogue about this happens and that everybody is comfortable with the goals we've set, that they are, you know, enough of a challenge and that we're all, see them for the stretch goals that they are. Thank you. So I don't know if that, make that in the form of a motion to return this to the personnel subcommittee?
So, motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary, to refer this document back to the personnel subcommittee for further consideration? Okay. Any discussion on that motion or request for roll call? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The matter is referred to the personnel subcommittee. We have a request for a liquor license for the Distinguished Alumni Award Program Thursday, November 29, 2007. All right. And the second request is for Class of 1957 fundraiser on November 4th. Consider them both together. Is there a motion to approve? By Mr. Leary, second by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? Roll call. Roll call.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatakante.
Present.
Six yeas, one present, approved.
I understand it's a wonderful evening on both evenings. I applaud the alumni, I applaud the fundraiser, but it just, it's an educational institution?
There are five convention conference requests. We'll consider those all together unless there's an objection. What's the wish of the committee?
No objection, Your Honor. Make a motion to take them in total, and I applaud the ROTC for bringing in stuff several months in advance. You can tell they're the military. It's a lot to be said about that.
All right. So motion to consider them all together and to approve by Ms. Fatakante, second by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The requests are approved. And the last item there is under.
There has to be a roll call.
I'm sorry. Roll call on the.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatakante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
And the last item, we have a communication from the family of Raj Dubey. I'll just read it. It's very short. "Thank you so much for remembering my husband at the school committee meeting on September 5th. He deserves any honors he could receive, and I truly appreciate your acknowledgement. Sincerely, Pauline A. Dubey." Motion to.
Motion to accept, Your Honor.
Accept and place and file by Ms. Fatakante, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The communication is accepted. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Leary.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second by Ms. Fatakante. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Meeting stands adjourned.
Eight. One.